It's the wifi thing.
Um.
Yeah, but it's the wifi.
Oh.
No, no, please, guys, just getting started. Three of them, so. Okay, do you want to welcome everybody? Speak as loudly as I can, can you hear me back? Yep, thank you. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to council meeting of Monday, the 29th of May, 2023. Just a reminder, in terms of health and safety, if the alarm starts, you may make your way out that door and across the room, across the road from this building and away to constructions from the start. So, as I explained earlier, unfortunately, the regional council's technology has failed us this morning. So we don't have microphones here, we're relying on the ceiling microphones. We are unable to livestream this meeting, but we will record it and then we'll make it available on YouTube. And can I just remind everyone to either turn off or turn to silent their mobile phones? And Shad, can, I don't think Carlos is here, can I ask Shad to open us a question for the car care?
I just want to acknowledge everybody for being here, particularly members of the public, and also just staff. So I'll just like a little shortcut here, and then we'll move through the proceedings with that.
Thank you very much, we have no apologies, all commissioners are here, that brings us to the public forum. And first up is Mr Graham Benby. Now, Graham, Mr Benby, I apologize to you that we missed you last time, I contacted you straight away, and I'm pleased that you have taken advantage and come to talk to us today. So you have five minutes? Well, up to five minutes, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, Ian. I'm Graham, we're a resident of Taronga for 38 years. I'm very familiar with the domain and have a very good knowledge of the community usage of the Taronga Domain facility over those 38 years, having played soccer at Spotify Domain for many years, and I'm currently a member of a sporting club at the domain. I also started and maintain the change.org petition, hands off Taronga Domain and Bay Park Speedway. Over 1,060 people had signed this petition and commented to date. And I also am administrator for two Facebook groups, set up to save the domain in the state we currently know it. My vision from now and into the future for the Taronga Domain is as it is now, an open green space that the community of all ages, from toddlers through to octogenarians, can get their exercise. Most are able-bodied, but there are also those who are less able, whose carers regularly bring them down to the track for rehabilitative exercise. It's heartwarming to hear their sounds of delight as they get their exercise in the fresh, open air of the Taronga Domain. The Taronga Domain is the last open green space, and it's well away from the traffic noise of the city. The words from a song that Joni Mitchell wrote are even more relevant today than they were when she wrote them in 1973, 50 years ago. They paved paradise and put up a parking lot with a pink hotel, a botech, that could be the proposed stadium, and a swinging hotspot that fits the festivals and concerts. Don't it always seem to go that you don't know what you've got till it's gone? Paved paradise and put up a parking lot. She wrote the lyrics out as she peered out her hotel window in Hawaii, hoping to see breathtaking scenery of the island and ocean, only to see an ash felted parking lot in her vision. And she reflected on why, as humans, we take nature for granted. This proposed botech stadium would result in the destruction of the publicly funded athletics track, which is so well used by athletes in the community at large because of its central city location. Also set for disruption are the croquet lawns, which would be bulldozed to primarily accommodate cow park. Remember those haunting words from the Joni Mitchell song? Don't it always seem to go? You don't know what you've got till it's gone. They paved paradise and put up a parking lot. I attended a presentation on 28th of April by Priority One, the proposals of the botech stadium, and I was astounded to hear Mr Tuck's answer to a question from one of the invitees as to whether a survey of the community usage of the Taronga Domain had ever been done in preparing their business case. The answer was no. It's clear that the people who put the binary business case together had no idea of the thousands of the public along with club members of various sporting clubs that use the Taronga Domain, for not only their chosen sport, but their exercise with their family, children, etc. No one has ever bothered to come along to the Taronga Domain, even to ask users what they were doing for Taronga Domain. That, I believe, is shameful and ignores outright the unspoken wishes of thousands of people of this city and the Western Bay of Penang. What if this proposed stadium doesn't proceed? What a waste of hundreds of thousands of dollars to prepare this report when, had thought been given, they would at least have given the community the opportunity to say their piece before the money was spent. The last two stadiums built in New Zealand have been in Eden and Wellington, names I'm sure you'll be familiar with. Both were built on land, not as green, not in use as green space, not the last open green space in the central city either, such as proposed for the Taronga Domain. The aim is to train and does not require main arterial roads to be closed off before, during, and after the event, the attendees enter the stadium, take the right now with the main access, and will continue the progress proposed goes ahead. Priestwich is rebuilding its earthquake damaged stadium on vacant ground after the earthquake. Try from the citizens of Priestwich, with part of Healy Park, could be proposed for the replacement stadium.
You just about finished, Graham?
Yes.
Over your five minutes now.
The citizens of Taronga have every right to feel outraged when they learn of this proposed stadium on the last open green space in the central city. If a botech stadium is on the cost of city, they should remember that the money from the council is, in fact, the assets that the public almost certainly paid for.
Funding mechanisms and operating mechanisms, and did not make any decision on next long-term plan. So that decision is yet to be made, so we appreciate all the points you've made, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Mr Christopher Patterson. Good morning, Mr Patterson.
Morning.
Make sure you speak up so the mics can hear you, and you have up to five minutes, starting now.
Thank you, cure of commissioners and council members. Voluntarily, members, we provide a fun rail of ride escape at the reasonable price to children and their parents from all over Taronga and beyond. We often have in excess of 1,000 patrons every Sunday that we run, where the permitting. We also provide night runs for Halloween in Matahari, which are highly popular and well supported by parents and their children. We've won a number of awards for the public service we provide. Some parents have enjoyed rides on our trains when they themselves were children. We've been told that we are the most popular track in New Zealand. We're aware of proposals to refurbish and develop the Queen Elizabeth Youth Centre sometime in the future. We've seen a draft proposed development outline, and we are concerned that this development may encroach upon the area we currently lease. The track that we've laid down has taken considerable amount of time and money to create, and this is not easily altered or moved. It must be properly engineered to be safe for both us and our passengers to use. Along with the expanding population of Taronga, the ongoing upgrade of city facilities are inevitably necessary. At present, our club is living in a state of uncertainty regarding this proposal. There is no point in our spending money on improvements or maintenance of our facility, such as painting, until we are secure and knowing our future. We will involve in the planning of this project, so that we may also plan ahead for changes to our assets. These changes cannot be made overnight. We need to provide continuity of service to the public as best possible. We wish to invite commissioners and members of the planning committee to visit our facility at an agreed day, so that you can see, be shown our facility and how it works. If you wish to do so, kindly contact our secretary. That is the submission on the Model Engineers Club. I would also like to say something on the domain, and this is shortened brief. You already have heard many submissions on the subject of changes to the stadium. In my opinion, this is less than ideal and will create more problems than it will solve. If we in Taronga and the rest of the 10 region really do need a venue to host rugby and soccer events, as well as offering a venue for conferences, then we should start from a clean slate. They say a camel is a horse designed by committee, we should avoid creating a camel here. My suggestion is that we build a stadium on a greenfield site where there's adequate elbow room for a decent sized stadium, and all the services that would need, be needed to support it, as well as room for future expansion. By all modes of transport for all the patrons it intends to serve. The perfect place would be in the area
I'll just get a comment, I suppose, in terms of your thoughts about a
You need to speak up.
Sorry, just in terms of your comments about a proposed location for us. Site assessment a number of years ago to look at across the sub-region, and I don't
That brings us to Margaret, low bench, and, and here.
We'll do our very best, Madam Chairman, am I allowed? I would give a bit of a hard one, Margaret. Just wanted to say I walk this one bit from the bit in country club and we're there because with the paper road that we walk one I can up there at the entrance, but it's just it's the wind road, should be all now your lovely Billy Hyde came to this in a country club, had a couple of in the road and the long and yes and we're saying instead of the hooves and boots that you want to put
Head of Chief at the Councils, I am here in support of the getting the country club to the marai and hopefully it will begin completion of the six used in the sound developer program section, one likewise for the low marai located so the number of visits looking at the certainly home to BCC and now over 200 insurers with further development this story here further accommodation, but also manage mobile areas and citizen to the local area, more understand this morning, there are 38 units, 35 meters that facility, which of course brings that area well over problems or construction on five, should be other issues associated here safely on six, tourism associated with our open marai is also increasing, and that is a very positive move, and we should pretend our most effective rolling access possible down to the rock. Finally, the rolling is narrow and burns quickly turns to a problem. Looking outside, sure is a development access road. Not too much for us, or after so many years of life. But thank you for receiving our
metal chair so it's just a level thank you very much bring to us a long time I Thank you very much. Thank you all. And I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay, so that's. The way. It is an item to be unfinished reading. It is an item to be considered in the public's supervision meeting, but the reports and the name of the written sentence will be made. Must decision must be made and. Call for a move. We've got shared. Okay, confidential business to be transferred into the open air as well. I did the question. And then it is. Well, so this question of this machine is the.
And it's just setting out our expectations of the board that will help them draft their statements of intent, which will come to us. And in July, well, it comes to us at the end of June, but come to council formally in July. Happy to answer any questions.
So, hi, thank you, and you have to speak up because you've got a soft voice. Um, a couple of, couple of queries I had, so if I'm looking at page thirty six, under the objectives. It just seems a bit clumsy. I think I understand the meaning, but. From around the region, aren't they? It seems a bit clumsy because the region. People from around the region. And then. Provide confidence to the investment markets and this. I, I would have, I just wondered why we haven't. Bored with that, because we, we're providing confidence to the business markets. Or C V D, aren't we? At the C V D? Because we want that private investment in a whole variety of places. That was, that was my question. I know she's got a. Question as well.
Thanks, Anne. I do have a question, page thirty eight, on the legislature, from the council. Board, the second bullet point, it talks about the council.
Because I'm aware that councillors can attend C C I meetings, but they surely. I want to be sure that that's. Open and transferred, so able to be given commercial constraints. I, I guess we'd probably be a bit more comfortable if we. Took that out, took that whole phrase out and talked more with the C C Os about what that relationship looks like. Between the ownership C C O and the construction oversight C C O, and that might be.
Your meeting of the month, so if you can ask any questions.
Yeah.
This is what the.
I think, is that, is that what I'm thinking? Anything else on that? Thank you, Sharon. And Stephen said, for those in favour. Against, carried. Thanks very much, Anne. Brenda, traffic and parking violations.
Do you want me to come up?
Yes. You insist on sitting at the back of the road.
No, no, it's just, we don't know where to fight it, so.
Oh, right. I think there's a couple of questions.
Where can we also, who's.
Now, I'll take the report as read.
I just had a query. And it just general kind of query in terms of. All of the work that we're doing, particularly on Cameron Road. And so when I look at the report, and in particular the amendments, and it's mainly around the consultation, so. There's an assumption that through the. It's not an assumption, I'm pretty sure we've done the work to solve and engage in the community, other than. Parking strategy, and then the parking plans, and then these adjustments. So I'm just wanting some reassurance that we are. Closing the loop. In terms of the businesses for the residents, in terms of the changes that proposal on Cameron Road. Um, yeah, closing the loop in terms of talking to the. Businesses, talking to the owners who propose particularly the removal of car parks.
So in relation to, so in relation to this report, I'll come, I'll come to Cameron specifically. Typically, these are requests that come from residents directly, so a lot of the minor ones are residential requests that we just enacted. And in terms of Cameron Road, we have done that consultation around the parking strategy project itself. So a lot of those individual changes are discussed with business owners as we go through. And this report is just legalising the changes that are required to make it work. We will probably come through at the end and do a full tidy up of the whole project here to end, just to make sure we've got it covered. But obviously, we're doing some minor changes now as we go through, which is why there's some, some changes shown in this report. But we definitely do consult, we don't just go in and whip out parking, et cetera, without informing the adjacent businesses as either part of the overall project consultation. Or individually, if it's a one-off request from an adjacent business, et cetera.
Probably just following the hunt, Brendan. In terms of that wider project consultation. My email is very busy in the week. Um, people. Sometimes forget what's happened in the past. So when was the timing then of that wider consultation in terms of what was happening? Particularly in front of their businesses, not where they've requested, but what's happened as part of the upgrade. And then when it's upgraded, parking situation.
Yes, so the original consultation was done probably started about two years ago. And then it's been ongoing sort of over the last, the next twelve months. And now as we're starting construction in each block, there is further discussions with those business owners as we go through. That is done between our team and the contractors' team as well. It is, it is a long period, unfortunately. Those plans are live on our website, so those changes are available. If any changes made as a result.
Joint Public Transport Committee, we've asked for that ten year master plan because it's going. We can move. Having our ball. Now whether that takes one lane of track. Or whether it takes all the parking out to make it some stage. So we need to be signaling that quite clearly in that ten year master plan. Because that was the agreement with our partners, both at the regional council in Whaka Koutahi, who funded, co-funded the project. And. Which isn't necessarily a place where you start up your business expecting people to be able to park. We've been given three thousand. Be careful because they're not three thousand odd people, but it's approximately three thousand people moving into the city. And a lot of those are going to have to be catered for along Hakkim Road. So it will be in ten years' time of different.
Getting into town, they have four to six P M in the evening, getting out of town. We can definitely confirm that, so that's.
And I think, I think that will be helpful. Okay, I don't get the conversations. Anyone?
I've seen that parking more than a lot. So, and I think that's Saturday in terms of people coming in. My question in terms of Nick or Brendan is what's happening with the parking.
Yes, we are, so we are looking at an alternative for the leased parks. On the back of feedback that we've had from the community, that it is sometimes difficult for paying customers to buy the park. At, at lower levels, so that's actually something that Reese has been looking into as well. So if I can hand over to Reese to give you a bit of a rundown. Um, it's, it's a, it's an early making sort of plan and we will come back to you with that. I don't think it's a decision that would require.
It's not a council decision per se, it's more operational.
And I'll try to keep away from Brendan in the light, I'm very much a private sector baby, it's a bit of an adjustment. But in this case. By efficiency and the use of our space in the city. So part of that public consultation and what we're getting a lot is. The parking buildings have obviously been free over the weekend since we reintroduced paid parking. We've had lots of people. Coming to the city, going to the parking buildings, especially our Spring Street building, which is currently going through earthquake strengthening. So bays are at a premium there. They turn up and they find all the bays have reserved, they were reserved for our leaseholders. And in fact, 43% of our bays in those two parking buildings are reserved for leaseholders. And we're only seeing a maximum of 65% occupancy on Wednesdays and Thursdays and the rest of the week it's much lower than that. So we've got 43% of our space only being used half the time as a general. And we just need to be a bit more efficient. Those bays are at a premium, everybody's fighting over their parking spots. And we need to make sure that everybody has access to it, especially when we're free over the weekend and off hours as well.
Thank you.
You haven't seen me?
Yes, and I'm, I'm heavy to see, didn't I? I've sent a couple of comments as well. Yeah, I found it really useful. I went back through to the parking strategy to look at the outcomes. Back from one was, I'm just picking on the ones that I think are tax, back from one is about. Vibrances, so I think we're getting more people in town turnover. Back and forth was support access to all, so they have that turnover. Letting the people in and around the city and then I have a few thoughts about them. Would be useful to kind of, and, and you're probably already doing it, then have a monitor, see how a lot of changes are over time. And what we have up in this would be useful to understand as far as the occupants. Also, I think would be useful to check in, I don't know if you're already doing it, but with Main Street. With the new chair, um, to understand what the needs are. Not so much names, but. Have a hospitality secret. Tracking these, these changes because I'm aware of the petition of Mr. Watin. Through rates, especially about hospitality work is in C B D.
One thing I would say, I said I meet with Main Street about a week ago, so they're aware of proposed changes today, so they, they were sort of. Didn't give them the detail until it had come through. Uh, one of the things we'll have to just. Watch over the next few months as your C B D rebuild start is. Saturday parking, if, if we find a lot of the workers. Find it very convenient to park on street all day, it was part of the reason we originally put Saturdays in there. So. But we can monitor that and just gauge how much parking is being sort of chewed up by workers. Hopefully it won't be too bad, but it'll be just this balance of ensuring that there's available parking for those coming in for. Feeding out or whatever in C B D.
So, so in the discussions that I've had with various hospitality teams. Uh, one of their big concerns is the staff parking at night. Now I know we've got CCTV cameras in our parking buildings, there's still a perception of, of it being unsafe. Both passage from the hospitality. Venue itself through to Spring Street, but I just wondered whether you can keep an eye on. And in your discussions, talk about, is there more we can do to help with that? And then I'm not sure of what the mechanisms are for parking in Dive Crescent and Cliff Road. So a couple of them talked about that and getting access. Um, for parking, for parking in the evening, for staff coming in for. They're not charging for parking, but how do they get access into those car parks? Because I'm assuming there will be some sort of payment, some sort of arm or some way of getting in that which would be locked at night. So just thinking about that.
So for Dive Crescent, it's going to be what we call a pay-by-play site, so there won't be that barrier on, on the way in and out. For Cliff Road, obviously we can't, um, due to the resource consent on site, we can't have people coming in after a certain time in the evening, I think. But what people can do is if they turn up before that 7pm cutoff, they can leave whenever they want. So there's just a coil in the ground that lets people leave when they need to at Cliff Road. So they, if you start work at 3 or 4pm, you can park at Cliff Road. Pay for your parking up until 7pm if you're a little bit cheeky and then stay as long as you want until it starts.
Right, okay. But that would be helpful in your discussions to make that where.
We can definitely do that. I think one of the things we just have to be careful with Cliff Road, it is in a residential sort of. Nature, so like a few people's doing it would be okay, but you wouldn't want till 300 sort of vehicles leaving there.
I was, I was surprised that they raised Cliff Road because if you, if you're worried about walking through town to Spring Street, why would you go up. Past trees and things. I think Dive Crescent's probably the, the most likely for staff to be, to be parking and then. Short walk into there.
Yeah, I think we would probably recommend dive over there for that exactly.
Uh, in the light of the discussion, I agree with my colleagues about, um, a, uh, the ongoing monitoring and the. What's our finalized plan for the back door. So I'd like to suggest a C P N, which is that we receive. Four, say six months on the effectiveness of the change. And it plans for more effective utilisation of the parking door. It's a really important issue. We've got to, we've got to do the best we can to get parking working as best we can, so. Be helpful to ensure that we're on the case in six months.
So a C is asking for a, 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 eight and six month. Changing night and, and, uh, a report on the more efficient. If you were there?
Yeah.
You're, you're the mover, maybe to add six? And shared second that you were happy to. Okay, anything else? Good discussion. Nice to have you on board this.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye aye.
Against, carry.
Thank you.
Smart Growth Leadership Group, Terms of Reference. So you've done a lot of work with your colleagues around this.
Yes, Chair, um, and we've. Been through a lot of Smart Growth meeting and, um, and I'm more than happy to move. Um, what's proposed here and that's just backing up on the resolution status of the Smart Growth Leadership Group. Recommending back to each of the individual partner councils.
Um, I support it. Um. I set a comment just in terms of the leadership. On page 74, where it talks about full-time tenure, it presented us to be nominated. By EWE, which were. Agreed mechanisms. I'm aware that. Was some discussion about some of the. Just making it clear about, um, who's, who's appointed who. But at the moment, each of the forums at the point. I'm just not sure that it's been nominated by EWE. I just kind of, I think it just confused, intentionally confused this. Um, because I know that it's right by my own views. Who's, who's appointed who? I would be happy to see that in the same by, by through any, any authority we can use. It was right, I was, I'm just wanting to make it clear.
Because it was raised at the last leadership meeting.
And if we take out by EWE.
We, we would be unable just to do that here today because it's been signed off and agreed through the Smart Growth process. So we'll have to look around. Uh, I'll just note it, but we could, we could approve it, but then.
Raise it.
Raise it, saying, okay, our, and what Chad's raised to be reviewed.
Well, I, I think, I think that would be the sensible thing because it has been raised by one of the, one of the EWE anyway. So we are going to have to have that discussion. So if we, if we pass the resolution here, which has been agreed. But then note that that, that, that issue needs to be discussed at the leadership group. For clarification.
Uh, you could when you're doing the Smart Growth Strategy in 2023, because that strategy will include more than it. The goals in terms of reference, and that's coming up soon. Is that probably a good place to actually have a discussion? And then the strategy will come back for approval and then we could do the refinements at the same time.
So you want the, the recommendation?
Yes.
Yeah, so it gets it on the record.
Record, yeah, yeah, to, to, um, to, to review as part of the Smart Growth Strategy, if you, and, and including this matter and any further requirements. So that, that just provides a vehicle. As part of that type of washout.
I'll just swap this one.
It would be done.
Would be, how would be here would be done?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's going to be an item for discussion anyway. All right, um, I think the important thing is to note that although we're setting up. That, um, meeting of the leadership with ministers. Which, so, so that we can get a more focused discussion that doesn't preclude the ministers coming. And talking to the Smart Growth Leadership Group. Um, it just gives us, just gives us a bit of control of our date. So the first meeting this year was held up for. Six weeks trying to get a date that fitted with the ministers. So our quarterly meeting, our next quarterly meeting is actually only a month away from the first one. So the neighbours have set a proper programme, um, that ministers. EWE groups as part of the Smart Growth Review. What is that, strategic review?
Strategic, smart strategy review.
Strategy.
It's called Smart Growth Strategy 2023.
I've got a meeting this week, lots of that.
Okay. All right, so that's their move and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. And that brings us to, so we're going to interrupt, we're going to. We're going to adjourn the public part of the consultation. And here.